We are now reconvening as a regular meeting of the Minnehaha County Planning Commission. And I've already went through the introductory comments about the cell phones and about the website. Any final action taken on the conditional use permit applications tonight will take effect five working days following this meeting unless a written appeal of the Planning Commission's decision is filed in the Planning Office by Monday, January 30th at 5:00 PM. In the event of an appeal, the decision will be referred to the County Commission for a hearing on Tuesday, February 21st at or after 9:00 AM. The affected parties will be notified of the meeting date. Meetings of the County Commissioner are held in the same room. Any final action taken on the temporary use permit application tonight will take effect five working days following the meeting unless a written appeal of the Planning Commission's decision is filed in the Planning Office by Monday, January 30th at 5:00 PM. In the event of that appeal, the decision will be referred to the County Commission for a hearing on Tuesday, February 21st at or after 9:00 AM. The affected parties will be notified of the meeting date, and meetings of the County Commission are held in the same room. First on the agenda is public input. Is there anyone here wishes to speak on an item that is not on the agenda?
Yes.
And I will allow you five minutes to speak. Please state your name and address, sir.
Christian Swenson, 230 Needros Avenue, Baltic, South Dakota. I am addressing the Commission tonight in regards to the Coachman Manor Trailer Court that has been approved just west of the Baltic Interstate Exit. It seems as though kind of similar to this previous one where the signage was in question. First of all, I guess I should start with the original zoning had been denied on 523 of 22. And so my first question would be, was there a second posting for any reapplication for that?
You can't speak.
You can't? Oh, all right.
We can't really.
Well, I guess that would have been good to know in advance. I would have asked that to the staff on previous phone call. But also, in regards to the whole thing, I've talked to quite a number of people, including the Superintendent of the Baltic School District, who all of those students would be coming to. And as you may or may not know, the Baltic School District recently passed a bond to build a $29 million addition to our school, anticipating it would provide a 15-year growth window. And even at the current rate of one student per two trailers that Coachman Manor Trailer Court currently has, that would bring in an additional 60 students, which would cut roughly three years off our 15-year plan. And so in 12 years, we're going to be up creek without a paddle because we will have not fulfilled our bond yet, and we won't have enough money coming in from trailer courts because they have very low property values that would contribute towards our capital outlay funds to put forth into a new school. Also, in reading through all of the materials that Kevin provided to me and in some discussion with him, I was informed that the Superintendent also had not been contacted for any input from the Commission, which I found somewhat shocking. The only person from the school that was informed was Darren Larson, who happens to also be the landowner that sold them the land. So that, as you can see, definitely is very fishy. And then there have been people who also outlined some of my concerns over the time period, including that there were issues regarding groundwater runoff, and that was not addressed in the conditional use permit that was granted. And I guess also going along some of those lines, I would be questioning what newspaper any of the notices were put in because I have talked to quite a few people in the Baltic area who would be heavily impacted by this addition to the trailer court, and nobody knew about it. Even people who are actively involved in the community, as myself, nobody knew about it until it was too late. So they flew under the radar, given that they were just outside of town, and only had to post their sign pretty much in their own driveway. And most people get on the interstate and don't drive that little bit further to see anything that would have been posted. And then even the newspaper requirement, how many of the people these days actually read the newspaper? It's not many. So the county needs to come up with a better way to inform the general public, especially on something of that magnitude. Then also going along those lines of some opposition for the trailer court, I spoke with even the Sioux Falls Zoning Department today, and they pretty much, without saying it, said that they do not allow any more trailer courts to come into city limits because there is a demographic that would come along with that that would be detrimental to the community overall. And that they also have, 9% of their courts have vacancies. So that was also a reason that they would not be in favor of any further expansion of trailer courts in the city. So why would we be for that in the county at all? Then I also spoke with the Sheriff's Department and, okay, about what would be warranted for sheriffs being on parole or patrol in that neighborhood. And because they're not a municipality that has paid for any contracted services, there would be very little police presence in that trailer court, only when they were called in or if they were investigating other crimes there. And then it does have some HUD requirements for any of the new homes, and I'm just curious as to what it would take for the county and people that are then going to be impacted, even in Baltic, just down the road, to be able to make sure that those HUD requirements are enforced, not just right away when new trailers are brought in there, but 10, 15, 50 years down the road when things have become dilapidated as that trailer court currently has ample supply of. Thank you for hearing my concerns.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any public input? Please state your name and address.
Betty Strum, 7504 West Loganberry Street, Sioux Falls. I have a question about an issue that possibly is needing to be taken care of. I'm wondering that if anyone on the board have any type of interest in the ethanol or fertilizer companies that have signed up with Summit and Navigator or direct interest in Summit or Navigator themselves, such as receiving payments, interest, stock, dividend checks, investment, and any other type of financial gain? Or do you have immediate family members or a family business that has any interest in the building of Summit, Navigator, or any future carbon pipeline? This is a point-of-order question. We have this letter, we have this letter sent to PUC that shows a conflict of interest. You probably know that Kristi Fegan stepped down from the PUC due to a family member land that was being crossed. Mike Poppins recused himself from the Lincoln County Commission for the same reason. A point-of-order needs to be taken to be sure there are no conflicts of interest by the governing bodies that will be working with, for sure, two pipelines that are going through Minnehaha County. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, then we'll move on. At this time, the Planning Commission will consider the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are perceived to be non-controversial and meet all of the requirements of the Codes and Regulations. The consent agenda will be acted on in motion with no public hearing on the items unless a member of the public, the Commission, or staff requests the item be removed from the consent agenda. The minutes from the November 28th, '22 meeting are on the consent agenda. Next, I'll read each item on the consent agenda. Item number three is conditional use permit 23-02 to exceed 2,400 square feet of accessory building space, requesting 3,600 square feet on the property legally described as Lot A, Lacy Track 3, southwest quarter, Section 5, Township 101 North, Range 48 West. That is the Split Rock Township. Petitioner and owner of the property is Eric Postma. Location is 7700 East Calle's Place.
Excuse me, Bonnie, can you adjust your microphone? It's kind of off to the side. Yeah, get a little bit closer to you. There you go. Thank you.
Sorry, Tony. Item number four is conditional use permit 23-03 to expand the mini-storage facility on the property legally described as Dawson's Track 2, to include the property legally described as Dawson's Track 1, all in the southeast quarter, Section 12, Township 102 North, Range 50 West. That is in Benton Township. The petitioner and the property owner is Timothy Tyhert. That is located at 25771 472nd Avenue. Madam Chair, I move approval of the consent agenda.
One second.
I have a motion and second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. If your item has been approved, you're free to go. We'll move on to the regular agenda. That's item number five, temporary use permit 22-03 to allow a temporary asphalt plant on the property legally described as Track 3, Harz Edition, southwest quarter, Section 30, Township 102 North, Range 50 West. That's in Benton Township. Petitioner is Chris Bremer. Property owner is White Buffalo Ridge LLC. It's probably a half a mile east of I-90 exit, 390 on South Dakota Highway 38. Kevin?
Good evening again. I am Kevin Hookman from the County Planning Department. Temporary uses are part of the ordinance, which allows a property to be used for maximum duration of one year. And the typical process is that mailers get sent out, and if there's no opposition, the use is allowed with any sort of condition staff requires of it. If opposition is returned, it gets presented in front of the Planning Commission in the same manner as a conditional use permit. This temporary use permit request is for asphalt plant on the property near Hartford, as shown on the map. A similar temporary use permit was approved on the property for the same company for the 2022 construction season. At the end of the season, the staff was receiving complaints about the asphalt plant, including noise, lights, smell, pollution, and smoke, dust being blown, and additional truck traffic on the roadway. Staff received the written objection, and that's why we're here. For a temporary use permit review, there's the application form, which lists that the applicant is doing the temporary asphalt plant operation. The request is to last through December 1st of 2023, and the hours of operation are requested to be 6:00 AM through 9:00 PM for the daily required or allowed times. For temporary use requirements, and there are standards to be reviewed, and I'll kind of go through them quickly here, that the temporary use has no adverse impact on nearby properties or jeopardize public health, safety, and general welfare. As I noted, there was written opposition, which lists many items that have been a nuisance for the neighboring property owners, including the dust and the smoke and the smells. Staff is suggesting that the hours of operation be reduced in timeframe to limit the potential or the timeframes and the nuisance, as this is a temporary use for the, in the industrial-zoned area. Number two, the temporary use will not create hazardous traffic conditions or result in traffic excess of the capacity of the road serving the use. The property does have access to South Dakota Highway 38. The excess traffic should be able to be, or the road should be able to accommodate the excess traffic that this will produce. Number three, the site is adequate to accommodate the proposed use, including the provision for on- and off-street parking. It is a large site. It has lots of space for on-street park, or, excuse me, off-street parking. Number four, adequate sanitation facilities will be available on the site. Petitioners' application explains that there will be 30 people working on the property, and they will have two portable toilets available for those people, and that should be enough adequate for the number of workers on the site. Number five, the time period of hours of operation for the temporary use are clearly specified. As I noted earlier, the hours of operation request is 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Staff is recommending to prevent some of the nuisance and the issues, especially pertaining to light during the early morning and the late evenings, that the limiting of hours of operation to daylight hours. As the months go, this will allow longer operation during the summer and shorter during the fall and the early spring, but also limited that it may not start any earlier than 6:00 AM or any later than 9:00 because come July, the time daylight starts earlier than 6:00 AM and ends later than 9:00. So keep those hours of operation with daylight time. Provision is made for the removal, cleanup, and restoration of the site. This property, prior to the operation, was a vacant industrial zone parcel, and the petitioner should be required to remove equipment and aggregates and storage off the site after the temporary use. Number seven, the temporary use will not adversely impact the natural environment. It is, the asphalt plant will certainly release some smells, gases, regardless of the location of the temporary use. This location is an industrial zone property adjacent to a state highway and nearby the work zone for the proposed use. The impact on the natural environment will be the same regardless of the location of the proposed industrial plant. Number eight, the site is suitable for proposed temporary use, considering flood hazard, drainage, soils, and other considerations that may constitute a danger to life, health, or property. This site is not in the flood hazard area, and there are brooms constructed around the perimeter to help reduce drainage. Number nine, all temporary improvements in any permanent structures proposed to be used will comply with all applicable provisions of the county's Building Code. Right now, the proposal includes only temporary job site trailers and no building permits will be needed. Staff does recommend approval of temporary use permit with the conditions, including that it's approved from March 1st through December 1st of 2023, and that the hours of operations shall be limited to daylight hours from sunrise to sunset and not starting before 6:00 AM or extending after 9:00 PM at any time, along with seven other conditions beyond those two that I read. Is there any questions?
Any question? Doug?
Mike, just have a question. And I don't know if the petitioner knows exactly, but by, when it starts at 6:00, shut down by 9:00, how much is that going to affect?
Excuse me, Doug, can you get your mic going? Okay. My main question is, starting at 6:00, ending at 9:00, is that going to extend the time that it takes to complete projects by shutting them down early? So are we gaining anything? If they could work later, they could get the projects done sooner. By not letting them have light extends their working.
I guess that would be a question for the petitioner.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions for him? Okay, is the petitioner here? Will you please step forward, state your name and address?
Hello, Christopher Amor, Bytum Minutes Paving, Building, South Dakota. As you heard, we hope to put our asphalt plant on the south side of Highway 38 again this fall for the shoulder project on I-29, or I-90, I mean. And as far as the health and safety and general welfare, we are tested by the EPA. We are certified. So that should not be an issue. Or will not be an issue.
Doug, did you want to ask?
And as far as your question goes, yes, it will extend the project because we have so much to do.
Mike?
Mike, can we have a ballpark figure about how much, many days, weeks it could extend?
Doug, your mic. Sorry.
If we go, so in the fall, you probably got, say, 12 hours of daylight instead of 15, so 25%. I mean, simple math, three hours, 20 to 25%.
Anyone else have any questions for him? Joe?
Yes. There's some aspect of this of the temporary nature here. I'm still the new guy up here, so I get to ask the dumb questions. But I thought I read in the packet, did you have the same operation, the same location last year in 2022? And what months of operation or what was the story in 2022?
We showed up at the beginning of November, and we were done by Thanksgiving, the day before Thanksgiving.
Okay, so fairly short duration project there, but what do you anticipate the actual operation in 2023?
A total timeframe of two months, early to late fall.
Okay.
All dependent and...
Okay. And do you foresee this going on to 2024 at the same location? Okay, so just testing the...
No, we have no plans.
So truly living up to the temporary nature of this through 2020, calendar year 2023 is the duration here?
Get the shoulders done on I-90 in the Westbound Lane there, just west of Hartford.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for him? I guess not at this time. Anyone else in the audience care to speak to this item? Please state your name and address.
My name is Megan Howard. I live directly west, I'm sorry, directly east of the proposed asphalt plant. In fact, my driveway is directly aligned. In your packets, there, one of the letters is mine, and I included two pictures of the impact of the asphalt plant, and I don't know if you received either one of them, showing the smog. In the three weeks that they were in operation, this operation severely impacted my family. Prior to them going in, the owner of the property did call, my husband, Don, and I, to let us know that they were going to rent this property out for a temporary asphalt plant from September 1st to December 1st. Gave us the notice that they were going to operate normal business hours, Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, no weekends, and they were going to be done because they were doing a project right there on the I-90 exit, half mile from our home. And then they were going to be gone. With that understanding, we said, okay, we understand. That's fine. They'll be gone, and we won't fight it. They didn't show up in September. They didn't show up in October. They showed up in November. They showed up overnight. When they went to work, we woke up because the lights were shining through our bedroom window. It was so bright, we thought that a plane was landing on our property. We have five acres. I ran outside in my pajamas because I couldn't figure out what was going on, and my entire property was lit up. My animals, we have a hobby farm. They were disturbed. My kids woke up. They didn't know what was going on. There were trucks beeping right next door because my bedroom is 50 feet, feet, from the property line and the trucks and the industrial equipment and the beeping and the smoke stacks. It's not in the middle of that big square. It's right on the fence line. It is right next to my home. The smoke and the smog that comes out of that smoke stack settles directly on top of my property because we are in a valley, and the wind always blows from the west. And so it, the minute that they started operation, I had migraines. I work from home. I have for the last four years. We had migraines. My dog started coughing. I had livestock that died. We immediately sold our livestock because we didn't know what was going on. We had, I had an exchange student. She has asthma. She got sick. We actually moved her out because we didn't know what was going on with the situation. We bought, we've been at our home for eight years. We bought five acres to raise our livestock. We bought this acreage to grow our own food. The goal was a self-sustaining lifestyle. We wanted to raise our children out here in the wide open land that South Dakota has to offer. We moved up here 10 years ago to be able to have this lifestyle, to move out of the city. We don't live in the city. We live in the country. When we bought the property, next door was a cornfield. That property was a cornfield until last year. When they purchased the property, they cleaned it all out. There's no longer corn or soybean there. They put in the berm last year to try and break up the view for us, and the property owners and us, we've tried very hard to work together because they did have the industrial equipment along the back. You can see in that picture, they do have industrial equipment along the back. We've worked with them about cleaning it up. They've been very good neighbors. We've continued to work with them. But this asphalt plant is not, is not okay. It's not clean air. We cannot go outside whenever it's in operation. It's not safe. It's not safe for us. The minute that they started working, like I said, I received migraines. We had, we had a goat that died. My dog started coughing. I had to bring them inside. I couldn't let them go outside anymore. We sold all of our livestock. We weren't actually able to go outside and clean up our property for the winter because we couldn't breathe when we were outside. Our quality of life has been severely diminished since they, since they were, in the three weeks that they were in operation. Really, this notice is essentially a notice to vacate our home, and that's what you're asking us to do if you allow them to operate because we can't, we can't live there. And we've been there for eight years. We have a planned outdoor graduation party for my daughter. She's graduating from high school in May, and we have grandparents and great-grandparents that were going to be coming up here for that, and we can't. We can't have them here. We can't have them outside. We can't go outside when they're operating. We have a 21-year-old who should be able to come home this summer from college to be able to help us on the farm, and I don't want him home because I don't want him breathing that. We, I don't want any of us breathing that. 6 to 9 is unreasonable. And I know you asked about the lights. Those lights are unreasonable.
Excuse me, Devin Howard, husband, same house. Did you guys get the packet? Did you get the pictures that we provided? That's what I make sure because one of them shows very clearly what it looks like in our front yard at night after the sun sets.
With the lights. And one of them is in the day with the smoke. 6 to 9, I mean, 6 o'clock in the morning, that wakes us up. 9 o'clock at night, sometimes we're in bed before that. We can't go to bed. I can't go to sleep with those lights and with the trucks and the beeps and the noise of the machinery, and we can't breathe with that smell. And we have a new air conditioner, and we've had, we had to replace our filter twice in those three weeks. We can't have a family dinner. We can't hear the TV in the evening. I work from home. I understand that there, it's a light industrial, which it wasn't when we moved in, and that's a different issue, but I can compromise on the operation during working hours, but when I work, it's loud, my house shakes, and again, I cannot breathe. The quarry behind us doesn't operate those hours, and they want to, they operated 70s a week for those three weeks. 70s a week means that I can't go out and mow my yard. I can't go out and garden. I can't go out and do the outdoor activities that we purchased this home to be able to do, five acres to have a hobby farm, to grow my own food, to raise my own animals, to be able to enjoy my children. I can't do that when they're operating seven days a week. Highway 38 is an incredibly busy highway. It is the emergency route between Hartford and South Dakota. Right now, it's shut down because the bridge, I don't know if you guys know this, but the bridge on Highway 90 underneath is shut down. It's a very big inconvenience for the city of Hartford right now, but that is the, that is the route that is always open between the town of Hartford and South, in Sioux Falls. That is a very busy highway. It is adversely impacted when those trucks are coming in and out. That was not an entrance to Highway 38 until last year, when they put that entrance in there. The issue that I take with it is that those semi-trucks think that my driveway is the entrance to the lot, and those semi-trucks come down my driveway and do damage to my driveway and my yard. There are truck ruts everywhere, and no one else is paying for that damage. I have to repair the driveway. I have to repair when they come through and they try to drive over my septic and my gas line. We have a gate at the end of our driveway. The gate can't stay closed all the time. I have children that come in and out. We have our own repairmen that come in and out. We had Minnehaha Rural Water come out to put in a new water meter during the time that they were in operation. The gate was open for 20 minutes. In that 20 minutes that the county Rural Water gentleman was there putting in the new water meter, I had two semi-trucks come down that were looking for access to that asphalt plant. It's right next door, and that's damage that I now have to take care of. I can't keep them off of the property because they can't, they can't understand that I have a private drive. It is going to be adversely impacted. The highway itself, cars up and down, they speed all the time. That's a blind curve right up around where that, where the white Hartford city picture is. That's a blind curve right up around where that, where the white Hartford city picture is. That's a blind curve that goes up around. And there have been several accidents where cars have flown around that corner and actually driven off my end of the driveway and down towards the creek. The gravel that's going to be coming off of that access road and on to the, the Highway thirty-eight is actually gonna make it even more hazardous. Um, the semi-trucks that are going in and out are gonna be more hazardous for the drivers that are, that are not gonna see them coming around that corner. The people, that's a sixty-five mile an hour road right there, that's not safe for those. There is another access point down by the concrete plant, they can come back down and back that road. And there's an actual entrance point on the backside of that property that they could utilize instead. The berm in question, uh, is actually, it actually washed out this summer. It's not, um, a sustainable berm. It washed out because the retention wall, uh, blocked all the drainage from that field, uh, across to Skunk Creek. Uh, when it blew out, it blew out boulders across my driveway that actually made my driveway impassable. And I had to call the property owner to come and clean it up. When they did that, they loosely packed it back in and they cut a drain to the front on Highway thirty-eight, which with this year, with as much snow as we've had, because we've had, um, this is the most snow we've had since nineteen-ten. And with the amount of snow, when it melts, it's going to flood the front of that. It's gonna flood the front of my driveway and it's actually gonna flood across Highway thirty-eight, which was it, nine, uh, in two thousand and eighteen when we had-
Eighteen.
When we had the flood, that, the highest, um, snow-
Skunk Creek was frozen.
When the, yeah, Skunk Creek froze over and we had flooding in the spring and again in the fall. Um, it, the same thing is gonna happen, it floods across and it's gonna flood down into that property. And everything that's in that industrial park is gonna flood across and flood down. It's not, it's not built for this, it's not appropriate, um, for an industrial park like that.
Because i- in respect to what Kevin said earlier, I understand the impact to the, you know, the surrounding areas can be the same, except for the fact that if you moved into a different area where there wasn't a creek within five hundred yards of the drainage-
Can you use the microphone, sir?
Sorry.
Is this better? Sorry. Do I, how far back do you want me to go? So, um, I understand what he said about the impact of the environment, that'd be the same where, where you put it. However, if you put it into an area where there's not a creek within five hundred yards of the drainage point, you're not gonna have to worry as much about where those contaminants go.
This creek, uh, feeds into the Big Sioux. There was a big restoration project for Skunk Creek not too long ago. These are things that need to be considered. Bitimis actually called us after we put in our complaints. And they wanted to work it out with us before we came to this meeting, asking what they could do to compromise. And Zoe North, who is my neighbor, who will get up and speak after me, uh, we gave them our reasonable compromise, which I have a copy if you guys would like to see. They actually offered us money to make this go away. Um, they told us that they would be willing to reduce their hours of operation, they would give us blackout dates. In his email to me, he told us that he was only gonna operate, um, four weeks in, excuse me. One to two weeks in early spring and four weeks in late fall. Those are the only, um, that was their schedule. And so, uh, if you approve this, I would request you only approve it for the time he needs to operate and still limit the hours of operation because he was willing. As requested hours of operation, um, to which we can make a schedule to accommodate. Um, these are things that he told us he would, um, he would work with us on a requested list of blackout dates because I didn't want them operating while our daughter was doing her graduation party. Lastly, please derive a formula for monetary compensation that you both would feel would suffice for your loss of revenue and life disruptions. Because we did have to sell our livestock that is part of our livelihood. Um, we actually planned to sell our property this year after our daughter graduated. There's no way that we were gonna be able to sell the property with an active asphalt plant next door. This is actually going to reduce the property value significantly. We've been in there for eight years and our property value has increased significantly. But with them in active operation, there's no way that we would be able to recoup what we bought the home for. What they ended up offering us was two thousand dollars cash. Um, that doesn't even compensate us for, for gravel to repair the driveway. Um, it doesn't compensate us for further loss of the quality of life, um, for any further health issues that might arise if they are in operation. Um, it doesn't compensate us for the inability to sell our home, the livelihood of us having to sell our hobby farm, um, our ability to, to continue to lead our self-sustaining lifestyle. We enjoy being outside, this is why we bought our five acres. We will be unable to go outside, I won't even be able to mow my yard if they're in operation seven days a week. Um, our lifestyle has been and will continue to be adversely impacted if they are allowed to continue. The recommendation from Kevin does not address any environmental impact reviews that we would want them to do. There was really no research done on, um, adverse health impacts to, um, asphalt plants near, being near residential. I followed up, once I read Kevin's recommendation posted to the website last week, I followed up with an email with my own research, which he assured me would forward to you guys. And I hope you all received plenty of research and recommendations from the EPA and, and CDC, along with recommendations, an international recommendation that cited US regulations recommending that, um, asphalt plants be no more than two-point-two miles from residential home. I did find another, and I didn't send this, but there was a, uh, approval that was done in Iowa for a temporary asphalt plant very similar to this. It was approved because it was nowhere near a residential home. It was not, it was on a road that had no more than thirty cars a day. Neither one of those is the case here. If it were something similar to that, I would understand. But South Dakota has miles and miles of property and, that are nowhere near residential homes. There's lots of opportunity for this plant to be in other locations. I, I strongly urge that you guys consider that when reviewing and making your decision. I also urge that you, if you do decide to approve this, that you limit the days of the week, that they're operate seven days a week is, is unreasonable. Um, and it's not consistent with the nearby industrial, uh, businesses. There's only a two-string, um, barbed wire fence between us and them. And that berm doesn't reach all the way down to our home. The berm is only along the driveway and stops before you get to my home. So it doesn't block any of the view of the, of, of industrial equipment, the lights, the trucks, the, the view, any of it. Uh, we can see all of the ugly that's going on over there. The recommendation really to put gravel down is only gonna cause more debris if you allow them to use that entrance on Highway thirty-eight. So, um, we gave Bitimis our compromise and they, our reasonable compromise and they refused. So my question here is really, at what cost is your quality of life to you? And so I, I strongly, strongly request and urge and ask you to consider to deny this. Thank you.
Is there anyone else care to speak to this item? Step forward, state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Zoe North, I live at four-six-six-two South Dakota Highway thirty-eight. I live a hundred feet north of where the asphalt plant currently is operating. Um, I flew in sixteen-hundred miles last night for this meeting, um, because my husband and I were forced out of our home. My husband has a life-threatening illness and I have asthma. And we chose to leave our residence while my husband is still able to travel and be on an airplane because I don't know what his situation will be like further on if I did need to move him as the tar and the oil and the smoke and the smells and the lights. If you were in his situation, I don't think you'd be able to handle it. Imagine yourself having to deal with standing up and being dizzy and spotlights coming through your window at nine at night and you wanna go lay down and just rest and you can't. It's unacceptable to expect neighbors to have to put up with this from six in the morning till nine at night. I get up at six, I go to bed at night, I work from home. That is in my life twenty-four-seven, but not now, because we had to leave our home. I don't know what you think good, um, friendly industrial neighbors should do for their residential neighbors. Um, maybe they should talk to the plants next door, those companies. We've never had a problem with them, they've been good industrial neighbors or respectful, they have good, um, time management and operations. But my family has, I'm trying to not get emotional, sorry. We don't have that kind of time. So I, I, I wanna focus on just the health aspect for our family. I have asthma, I, I couldn't complete a complete sentence without forcing the air out because of those smells. It was so strong, we went and got an air purifier that blinks red from the amount of smoke that comes over our home. It's like when an airplane is descending, you see the smoke coming and going and coming and, or the clouds coming and going. Let's see. We have buffalo on our property. Our buffalo access Skunk Creek for their water source. Um, when the smoke is blowing over our property, because if it's not blowing over Megan's, it's usually blowing over ours. Um, our herd actually moves to another pasture. Buffalo don't even wanna smell that awful oil and tar. Um, I feel sorry for the folks up the hill because that valley just locks in that smoke. And then it just starts to peer over. When you come over that hill to come down, you're hit with that smell. And that's a half a mile up the road. Imagine when you're a hundred feet or fifty feet and you're smelling this and those lights are so bright, even if they don't even point them onto our property, it's a football field, it's bright. We're right there, there's so much land in this area, why did they have to pick right next to two homes? Our home's been there since nineteen-seventy-seven. And like I said, we aren't complaining about our other industrial neighbors because they aren't taking advantage and abusing our good faith when we said, yeah, go ahead and use it. You know, it's just a few months, we thought, but we had no idea, no idea it was gonna be that bad. Well, I have to say thank you so much for your time.
My name is Alex Hagan, I'm counsel for Miss North, uh, I'm at two hundred East Tenth Street here in Sioux Falls. I understand it's been a long, uh, evening and I'll try and be brief and indulge, thank you for indulging me. When we look at, one of the first things that struck out for me, um, in the application and the staff report was a comment from staff that they received no written narrative for the proposed request. And they had to cobble together the details from the application. And what I see here is basically a mismatch between the scope of the requested use permit and the actual use that my client, uh, and her neighbor that you've heard from have been told is used for this project, which is approximately four weeks in the spring and two weeks in the fall. And I understand, understand Commissioner Odie, uh, concerned about construction deadlines and so on, that sometimes when you need to, you need to make hay when it's sunny. But what was represented to my client in an email, uh, from the representative of the company on January fourth was that, quote, "Our tentative schedule for the work we have now is one to two weeks in early spring, weather-dependent, and four weeks in late fall." Well, this is a nine-month, uh, temporary use permit that would permit them to operate from six AM to nine PM or greater, depending on the sunlight, seven days a week. So if my client wants to go out and have a cup of coffee in the morning, she can be, expect to potentially be greeted with the sulfur smells. She can expect to hear the trucks go by, she can expect all of that, and so can others in the neighborhood. And if we look at the first prong of the nine standards that, uh, staff laid out, I just wanna focus on the language. Temporary use will have no adverse effect, not a substantial effect, not a effect that impacts, uh, health and so on. The language that you're asked to enforce here from the temporary use provision in section twelve point eleven is temporary use will have no adverse effect on nearby, nearby properties or jeopardize public health, safety and general welfare. That's not a temporary use permit that uses an asphalt plant. As you've heard from my client's testimony and her written submission and submission from her neighbors, there are significant health effects that go along with this use. And I think it'd be one thing if the narrative that was presented and the plan that was laid out uh, uh, identified specific time periods during which they intend to use this property and limited time periods. Not necessarily, uh, from six AM to nine PM, but let's say, we're gonna be operating during this time period, obviously dependent on the weather. But instead, we have this nine-month period, seven days a week, that they can operate from six AM to nine PM. What that effectively does to my client is tell her she can't live in her home because she can't anticipate when they will be operating and when these effects that impact her asthma and impact her husband who has a life-threatening condition, they're being deprived of her property. And I ask you, um, that that's, can't be the reasonable solution here. If you actually apply the standards that staff has, I think, given to you, you'll conclude that the adverse effects, based on the evidence, are material and they're significant. And the scope of the proposed use is excessive and it's unreasonable. There's reference to efforts that may be taken to mitigate the dust and so on, but they're not included in the conditions that staff recommended. And frankly, it's a half a measure. It, it doesn't permit my client to remain in her house or her husband to remain there and it affects the neighboring properties as well, as well. Uh, I have other points to make, but I think it's important to, um, be clear that if you apply the language as written, there are adverse effects. And the, the first prong of the first standard says, well, then this temporary use permit doesn't apply. If you look otherwise in your zoning ordinances, for example, in the zoning ordinance that applies for, uh, rock drilling and mining, that has a much narrower, um, set of timing restrictions. You can't, and this is, I think, in, uh, provision twelve oh eight, which is the Roxan and gravel extraction, there are much more limited hours, uh, limited hours on Saturday, no operations on Sunday. And so I submit to this body that the, the plan that was given to staff, uh, what, didn't have sufficient detail. And there is a better, uh, better way to do this, assuming that you find that there is no adverse effects. Because of the evidence that there are adverse effects, I don't think this can qualify as a temporary use under our ordinance. I'd be happy to entertain any questions if you have any. Thank you, appreciate it.
Anyone else care to address this item? Guess I'll close the floor. Commissioners?
Madam Chair, I, I was sensing some sense from the parties that there would be some appetite for additional conditions. I don't know that I'm in a position to propose those today. Again, I'd take any other guidance from my colleagues, but I'm, where my head is at initially here is to potentially defer this for a month, uh, especially if the use in question isn't imminent. Uh, we're talking about construction season, could we, uh, give the parties a, a month to possibly work with staff to find the reasonable accommodations that could make this work and revisit it if there are other conditions that the parties see as mutually agreeable?
Is that a motion?
Uh, for purposes of just keeping the discussion going, I'll, I'll move to defer to the February meeting.
Hey, I have a motion and second, um, any further discussion?
Comment for, you know, I'm typically not a fan of differing because I think you're just kicking the can down the road. But, um, in this particular case, I think, understanding that there might be some mutual ground that satisfies all parties, I think that, um, this might be an appropriate time to use that option, so.
Any other further comments?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'd just like to echo what they've all said. I think if you guys get together and work out, lie around, so they aren't working during your daughter's graduation, that would be a big plus. I think the buring would be the best thing right now.
Okay, I'm sorry, so does that mean we have to come up with a plan?
Okay, I'm sorry. So does that mean we have to come up with a plan?
You're out of order right now, ma'am. We've got something on the floor right now.
So my guidance to those folks involved would be to have a good faith discussion and back-channel through to our staff. I'm not forcing the discussants to get together directly. But I am confident our staff is willing to go over, just I think, just in the discussion this evening, we had various things that were thrown out as possible middle ground items that could easily be worked into additional conditions. And then the idea would be we'd be come back in a month, look at those conditions, and then we would take input from any members of the public of whether those were sufficient conditions. And we could either approve it at that point or deny it at that point.
Any other further discussion, Commissioners? I have a motion on the floor then to defer. Conditional, or temporary use permit 22-03. All those in favor of deferring this for a month?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. This has been deferred for a month. Move on to number six. Conditional use permit 22-75 to allow a motor vehicle repair shop on the property, legally described as Lot 1, Block 1, Brower Second Edition, Southwest Quarter, Section 27, Township 102 North, Range 51 West. That is Hartford Township. Petitioner and landowner is Thomas Asop, 46334 Jeffrey Street. Kevin?
All right. So this item, with the exception of Joe Kipli, appeared before you in November. And it was deferred to this hearing because staff had concerns about several conditions that were on the property, including parking on the street, items being stored outside. And trying to think of the other one. But I'll just show you some pictures since we had been through this item before. And a lot of the items have been largely addressed. So the request is for motor vehicle repair on the property. And it came to our attention because of parking on the street mainly and a few other things. The petitioner has taken our lead from what we discussed in the November meeting and has done a lot of work to clean up the property since that time. And you can see here some of the differences between what was being there on the left to what is there now. And the outside storage has been cleaned up. The parking situation is appropriate. The fence is still there on the one side to screen some outside view. But many of the items have been stored inside, as the petitioner has stated in his report. I guess to try to keep this analysis and review quick, I'll just jump right through the staff recommendation. Staff does recommend approval of this permit now. I am including eight conditions for approval. And those eight conditions cover the site plan. The, I'll just maybe run through real fast here. Number one, the property shall adhere to the submitted site plan for motor vehicle repair shop. Number two, the conditional use permit shall allow for motor vehicle repair and outdoor storage. All outdoor storage and parts in inoperable vehicles must take place behind the fence on the property. Three, that all new replacement outside lighting shall be fully cut off, fully shielded with recessed lights and prohibit the spillage of light beyond the boundaries of the subject property. Number four, that Article 15 parking and loading regulations shall require two parking spaces for each three employees in the maximum shift, plus space to accommodate all trucks and other vehicles used in connection with the motor vehicle repair shop. Number five, all signage shall follow Article 16 on-premise sign. Building permit is required for the installation of any sign. Number six, that all driveways, parking, loading, unloading areas shall be hard-surfaced according to Article 1504 of the zoning ordinance. Number seven, the loading and unloading shall take place in the right of, no unloading, unloading shall take place in the right-of-way at any time. And number eight, the planning and zoning department reserves the right to enter and inspect the motor vehicle repair shop at any time after proper notice to the owner to ensure the property is in full compliance of the conditional use permit conditions of approval and many county zoning ordinance. And the other one that I just recalled now was the building permit for the structure. The property owner did come in and renew the building permit. And he has one year to get an inspection with the building inspector for that. So staff feels that he's meeting the requirements and he can, and recommends approval.
Any questions for him? Is the petitioner here? Will you please step forward, state your name and address, sir?
My name's Tom Asop. I'm property owner at 46334 Jeffrey Street, Hartford, South Dakota 57033. I've been working with Kevin on a couple issues. We do not have a working out of zoning. That is, motor vehicle repair facility is a permitted special use in the I-1 Industrial District as per your coding book. I couldn't quote it out of my phone here if you'd like me to, but you all know it. It's, there is a conditional use permit already on this property from 14 years ago from Tom McNeely, the person that I bought the property from for a contractor's storage yard. As we heard earlier in the evening, the conditional use permit transfers with the property. It does not stay with the owner. It is still attached to the property there. Approved, whatever. It's 300 bucks. It's just money. We'll make more tomorrow. It's whatever it takes to get this done so we can just move on with life.
Any questions for him?
So this, he's not operating a contractor's yard. So what he is indicating to you, he's operating an automotive repair business, which is two separate uses. And in our ordinance, when a use expires or ceases for one year, it expires. So the fact that there might have been a conditional use permit granted 14 years ago, it has expired because the use stopped. So he, I just wanted to explain that.
Anyone here in the audience care to address this item? Commissioners?
Madam Chair, if I may, you know, it appears that the petitioner has addressed a lot of the concerns that were brought forth at the previous meeting. And I guess with that said, I guess I don't see a reason that we want to approve this.
Is that a motion?
It is a motion to approve.
Okay, I have a motion and second to approve the additional use permit 22-75. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Move on to old business. Scott?
So under old business, Scott Anderson, again, planning director. At our last meeting in November, we had a conversation about a proposed ordinance amendment for vacation home rentals or short-term rentals. And we had some input from the public at that last meeting. And I took that information that was provided at that meeting. And I've also been in contact with the Home Builders Association and others. So I have crafted or made some revisions to what I had proposed last month. I'll go over those quickly. I have indicated that it's a vacation home slash short-term rental. So I've added the term "short-term rental." I don't want to get in too deep into the woods and calling it an Airbnb or VBRO because those are going to change over time. And so I'm crafting something that's trying to catch all of those uses. It is, I'm proposing that we look at this as a conditional use. So we would require a conditional use, similar to the way that we treat a bed and breakfast. If a property owner wanted to operate a vacation home or a short-term rental, they would need to apply for a conditional use permit. The first sections, sections up to section four, those are the zoning districts which would allow this type of a use, which would be the agriculture district, the RC district, the rural residential, and the other RS1, I think. There's one more residential district which would allow residential uses. Then I have also crafted some general guidelines on how we would handle these. And I'll go over those with you. And I think that you'll find that it's going to address a lot of the issues that the planning commissioner, Commissioner Lutke from Sioux Falls, had brought up. I am proposing that we add, in Article 12, which is our additional regulations, we would add a 17th section that would deal specifically with vacation home rentals and short-term rentals. And that we would have the maximum occupancy of two people per bedroom. That would be the first one. The second, that the vacation home rental or short-term rental would register with the state of South Dakota. Third, that the minimum parking, off-street parking requirements would be one space per guest bedroom. And the fourth thing would be that the contact information for the owner or any manager of the home or short-term rental would be provided to the planning department. And any changes in those ownerships over time would need to be, the new information would need to be provided to the planning department. And the last condition to consider that when you're applying for this would be that that contact information for the owner or manager would need to be clearly posted inside the vacation home or short-term rental. That would be for the benefit of anyone that is residing on there or using, renting the property so they know who to contact. Because it may be one party, like the, you know, let's just say the grandpa that rents the Airbnb or the vacation home. But you may have two or three couples there. And what happens if, you know, there's some kind of emergency, like a water break or a refrigerator goes out, then they know who to contact. Then lastly, I have created a definition for vacation home rentals or short-term rentals. And it specifies that it's basically renting a portion or a dwelling or a portion of a dwelling that is rented, leased, or furnished to the public on a daily, weekly basis, not more than 14 days. That comes out of state law. The state law allows you to use your house or rent a house short-term less than 14 days. And they don't need to, you don't need to register that. And I think that's a nod to Sturgis, if I recall, that it allows people in the Black Hills to be able to rent their homes and not run afoul of state law. So I'd be glad to, so that's my proposal. Try to make it simple. If you feel that we need to add something else to the items that we consider that we make applicants aware of, I can add those in there. I will just state that we are going to, these are all going to be processed as a conditional use permit. So that does, that means that you, as a commission, and we as staff, can propose other conditions. So we're not limited to just these conditions. If there's something, some unique circumstance, then we can add a condition to try and address that. So I'd be glad to answer any questions. If you would like to give me some direction on how you'd like to proceed, I think we can have that discussion as well. As I indicated earlier, much, much earlier in the evening, this type of, this type of a change in the zoning ordinance is going to take a minimum of 90 days. That's not to say that if you wanted to have a continuation one month or the county commission wanted to continue it for a couple of weeks, that pushes it out. The very quickest you're going to get these through is 90 days.
Becky?
Thank you, Scott, for all your hard work on this. I think you've addressed pretty much everything that we talked about from before. I guess my questions, based on the earlier discussion, would have to be, have to do with anything related to taxes. Does it need to have a lodging license? And then there was the question about if it's in a joint, joint area, who handles complaints? So those would be my questions. And then I'm still not sure that it should be limited to two per room. But that's probably my thing. So thank you.
Okay, so first of all, the licenses and taxing. So that, as you know, the county doesn't collect, we don't get any taxes. And that was brought up also from the city about a bid, business improvement district taxes. Well, we don't have the authority to collect those taxes outside of a municipality. So it really, it doesn't apply to us. I mean, we can't, we can't collect any of those taxes. And they are required to register with the state. So they would, there may be state sales tax that they would have to collect. And that would be addressed with the licensing through the state. You talked about enforcement. And enforcement would fall, like the enforcement of any conditional use permit, would fall upon county planning staff to do the enforcement. If they were not meeting the requirements of the conditional use permit, we could receive a complaint and then we start, you know, we start a compliance process. The first thing we do to, you know, to get an applicant that's out of compliance into compliance is, you know, we reach out to them either with a phone call, we stop by in person, we write them a letter, or a combination of all of them. We tell them, you know, what the issue is and how they need to correct that. And then if they do not correct it, we have the option to recall that conditional use permit, which would bring it back in front of you for consideration on what action should be taken. If it needs to be revoked or amended to address that or just, you know, basically trying to get them to meet the conditions of approval. And what, were there other questions, Becky, that I missed?
No, that was it.
Okay, all right.
Anyone else?
Scott, I would just applaud you on the effort to, I think, trying to meet somewhere in the middle. Because I think we've had quite a bit of testimony there from some friends in Wall Lake that had a controversial issue. And we had a neighborhood that saw negative value to this in their community. I think tonight we saw, we had some testimony to that degree too. But then I think it was a couple of months back, we had a lot of folks from the business community that want to run this type of business and availability that had a lot of positive, so long as it's done the right way, they had a lot of credibility in running that style of business. So I think there were, there's two arguments on each side. And I think we're going to take them on a case-by-case basis to some degree. And that's what a conditional use permit is. So, and to my colleague, you know, I think we can debate and quibble around some of the exact figures. But I think Scott gave us a good starting point. And so we can talk about, you know, number per bedroom, et cetera. But I, so because these issues keep coming up, I don't know that I want to delay this unnecessarily. I would say, I'd ask Scott, I guess, what is, if we wanted to put this up for a hearing, we have to give notice of that, correct? So could that be at our February meeting? Have the hearing on this to get this more fully vetted out and possibly any amendments and then?
That's correct. So if you, if you want to move forward and you give me the go-ahead, I will, we have to post, we have to publish a hearing notice in all the official papers of the county. And we, because there's no property to post a sign or anything, but that is the steps that we go through. We publish that hearing notice. That will put it formally on your docket for consideration of a zoning text change. So that is the formal notice that we are going to amend our zoning ordinance by adding something, the wording. And it's, in the hearing notice, it explains that. And then when we have the hearing, you can make tweaks and changes. So so long they're not, they're not substantial, that you're not changing a different section of the zoning ordinance that you didn't advertise. But it allows you to, you know, you can have that discussion. Is it two people per bedroom or three people per bedroom? Is it, you know, is it? Is it, you know, is it one parking space per bedroom or do we want more? You can add, you could add, you know, a different, add a criteria if you felt we needed one and that would be okay because it's still in the same body of that work. So that's one option. I will, I mean, I'm confident and I think you are all aware of this too, that this is not going to be the last time that we deal with this. And I think it's a growing trend and it's not going to change, it's not going to go away. So I think we need to, to deal with it. And you, I think it's also no surprise that I think the best way to handle this is through a conditional use permit process because I think it's important for the neighborhood to be involved. I don't want to go through just allowing someone to register and voila, you have a short-term rental because I don't think that's fair to the neighbors to have something like that maybe brought on them without having them aware of it and having their input. And it can be painful, I mean, it can be long and we have a lot of discussion, but I still think it's the right way to deal with these is through a conditional use permit.
Well, Madam Chair, I'll move that we post and follow all correct procedure as Scott would see if it to set a formal hearing date for our February meeting. Madam Chair.
You have a motion, second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Get free to step forward, Scott. We're going to move on to new business.
Alright, under new business, as you're all aware, there's been a lot of discussion on the two proposed carbon CO2 pipelines that may be constructed in the county, one on the west side, one on the east side. And because there's been a lot of interest and requests to do something, to do something with the zoning ordinance, I have been approached by members of the public to discuss this and on what we should do if it's appropriate for a, another, like a text amendment or an ordinance that would address CO2 pipelines. So what I've done is, I believe it warrants a discussion and I've invited representatives that have approached me to make a short presentation to you. I've asked them to limit that to fifteen minutes and then that'll get, and then some time after that for you to ask any questions that you may have. And tonight, I'm not asking that you make a decision on anything. You certainly can if you would like to, you can say we want to draft an ordinance, but that's for your decision or your contemplation and you can make that decision. But so the presenters will be Tony Ventura, Paul Blackburn, and Rick Bonander. And they did give me a short narrative, which I have provided to you. And I know that they are here to make your, make a short presentation. So I'll turn it over to them.
Hi, we're going to be here tonight, so John Johnson is going to be the gentleman that speaks next. So this is Article 27. It's like a generic CDP pipeline ordinance that is for statewide and then you can adjust it to fit each county's needs because each county is different. So the purpose of this ordinance is short, is to outline, the ordinance is called a carbon dioxide pipeline or a CDP. Since land values have increased substantially, the Planning and Zoning Board soon will be more powerful than the County Board of Commissioners on land and land development rights. The local planning board should have the authority to set pipeline routes and move pipeline routes if the route is not a hundred percent voluntary. Planning and zoning can move, modify, and make new ordinances and comprehensive plans for development rights. This ordinance can be modified to any county's separate needs, which is this. It includes land use, fair process for environmental health, safety, and welfare for citizens in the county. I don't have time to talk about everything, so I've condensed this dramatically. These ordinance include local emergency response plans. No CDP may be constructed without a CUP for each landowner with separate hearings on each property. Planning and zoning boards shall consider a proposed route as well as alternative routes. A single-family home in building eligibility should have a setback of twenty-five hundred feet minimum. Livestock and open livestock areas, a hundred animals or more should have a setback of a thousand feet minimum. A small business, fewer than ten people, should have a setback of twenty-five hundred feet. A structure with ten or more people should have a one-mile setback. Nursing homes, hospitals, schools, entertainment facilities, parks, and cities, including growth plan areas, two-mile setbacks. Now, some people say, well, this is banning CDPs. This is far from true. Waivers are in place in every county to obtain by the developer to create, to operate collective bargaining and place fair trade. Alerting landowners in the event of a rupture, providing commercial CO2 alarms at the developer's expense that will operate within one mile of any rupture. Things that need to be in place for land rights, decommissioning plans. Landowner will not be responsible for leaks. Landowner shall be held harmless from damage. Noise levels should not exceed forty-two DBA from neighboring landowners and will include noise mitigation. Environmental impacts, a public liaison officer. Road hall agreements for roads, bridges, and rights right-of-way. A bond for damage, including leaks, deaths, and other health-related issues to humans and animals stemming from leaks. Financial responsibilities outlined. Notice of abatement, mitigation requests, landowner decommission agreements, county emergency response plan and approval. These are development rights issues on both sides of the fence. Has anyone ever seen the CO2 pipeline rupture video up front? Our concern should lie in what is potential is for the pipeline to fail or leak and how we plan for the aging and the probability of leaks and the hazards they'll produce. Who here tonight is in favor of safety ordinances? Raise your hands. So I think the thing you need to take out of this is if you're a farmer and you have animals in a pasture and a pipeline is put next door and that breaks, how are you going to get compensated for that? How are you, how are you going to be protected on your development rights, which you have housing eligibility for in a lot of these quarters? And so it's not just the side that it goes on, it's the side adjacent that you have to look at also for twenty, thirty years down the road. So I'm going to bring up Don Johnson now from Valley Springs and he's going to speak next and I'll be up for questions when you need me to. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Donald Johnson, City of Valley Springs. I have a local body shop and I've been fire chief in Valley Springs for twenty-seven years. I've been on the fire department for thirty-two years. I'm an EMT for about twenty-seven years. And if one of these things breaks, and these things, they're putting this thing in the ground less than fifty to a hundred feet from houses, they're less than a mile from my house. Are they going to put in a warning system? So that if this thing breaks, there's a siren that goes off that tells everybody to grab their car and run like hell? Because there is nothing I can do to stop it. The shut-off bells are twenty-two miles apart and they have to be manually turned off. And pipeline company says they will have somebody in the area to do it. Well, good luck. You know, it's, this thing, this thing could be a life and death thing and I think the reason they're pushing so hard now is the federal government is working on the rules and regulations to run these poisonous pipelines through the country. After the deal in Mississippi, where all these, and there's people down there that are still sick from this stuff and that's been a year or so ago, and they haven't done anything. You know, they'd had no warning, I mean, the firemen went running into that thing, they got sick. You know, thirty, forty people end up in the hospital with this stuff. It'll kill you and it don't take very long. And your car won't run in it. So if this thing breaks, hopefully they get that thing shut off because if you watch that video of that pipeline break, they did a test with a one-mile line. I'm betting that thing was two and a half miles wide in a matter of minutes. So you don't have a lot of time to get the hell out of there. Because it's just, and it's going to stay low to the ground because it's heavier than air. And the only thing you can pray for is a lot of wind so that it dissipates in a hurry. Other than that, I mean, as far as I'm a first responder, I'll respond with body bags and rendering trucks. That's about all that you can do. There is not, so far I have not seen anything from any of these guys in this pipeline that have showed any safety precautions that will do me any good to help save my people in my county, in my fire district. And I would like to see a whole lot of stuff done way before one of these pipelines even put in the ground. And I think the federal government's working on the rules and regulations that they have to follow. And these guys are pushing to get this thing in so they can be grandfathered in with this thing, running it right down our, right past our houses and our schools and our churches. So, you know, there's a lot to be thought about here. And that's all I have to say about it.
Paul, you're addressing the commission now?
Yep. Commissioners, my name is Paul Blackburn, P-A-U-L-B-L-I-C-B-U-R-N. I'm an attorney and consultant with the Bold Alliance. I provide advice on pipeline and ordinance drafting. And I'm sorry I can't be there in person, but I wanted to thank you for your time and considerations. First, let's talk about money. Before the so-called Inflation Reduction Act, Summit Carbon Solutions and Navigator Greenway each claimed their projects were profitable based primarily on federal 45Q tax credit passed in 2018. The Inflation Reduction Act increased this tax credit by seventy percent. That means that Summit could get up to another $420 million per year and Navigator had another $525 million per year. That's almost a billion dollars in pure federal pork above what they said they needed to be profitable in the first place. The 45Q tax credit is legalized theft on a massive scale. Second, let's talk about fairness. The county regulates wind and solar facilities, why not pipelines? The proposed pipelines, carbon pipelines will certainly adversely impact many more landowners. Third, routing and setbacks. Unlike North Dakota, Nebraska, Iowa, Minnesota, and Illinois, the state of South Dakota does not regulate pipeline route. South Dakota Public Utilities Commission has no authority over route. This authority remains with the counties. Minnehaha County does not take on routing and/or setbacks. Landowners have little to no ability to leverage a better route. Fourth, pipeline decommissioning. Once a pipeline permanently stops operating, federal pipeline safety jurisdiction ends because it applies only to pipelines that are currently operating or that are intended to operate in the future. The 45Q tax credit lasts only twelve years. What happens after that? If a 45Q tax credit disappears, so will the companies. These abandoned pipelines can cause uncontrolled drainage problems, sinkholes, erosion, interference with farming operations due to loss of cover, collapse of their farm equipment, et cetera. Neither the feds nor the state mitigate abandoned pipelines at all. It's on the county to protect landowners and nobody's going to do it. Fifth, county emergency response. Under federal law, the county has no authority to regulate how a pipeline company responds to rupture. But it's also true, the pipeline company has no legal authority to tell local police firefighters or EMS how to do their jobs, how to plan for and respond to a pipeline rupture. They can advise them, but they can't tell them what to do. The county has a duty to protect its first responders. While the companies may promise to work with emergency services, the county should not protect its first responders based on a handshake. These folks may leave after they cash out on this project. Instead, the county should prepare its own emergency response plan for this pipeline rupture. Sixth, just so you know, again, the proposed ordinance, the construction mitigation, noise, and inspection portions of the ordinance were lifted for the most part of the Keystone XL pipeline conditions imposed by the Public Utility Commission. Frankly, it's likely the PUC would impose similar conditions on Navigator and Summit. The reason for including them in the county ordinance is so the county has the option of considering mitigation improvements and offering suggestions for improvements to the PUC. But anyway, that's what I have for you. I'm happy to answer any questions about the proposed ordinance or any of these pipeline policy issues. Been working in this field for over a decade now and I think I've, in many different states, many different projects. So I'm happy to help you with any questions you have. Thanks for your time.
Do you know how to get the Elmo going for? So Joy would like to show, I guess, you can explain what you'd like to show.
My name is Dale Bonama and Joy asked me to talk about this a little bit and give you some facts, but I'm going to talk mainly on what she's showing you on this pipeline. I have a reading for it first. This video is a test of the pipeline. Let's go ahead. Rupture in a. This video is, was a test of a pipeline rupture in a controlled facility of a relatively small eight-inch. Eight-inch CO2 pipeline, which released one hundred and thirty-six tons of CO2 in two hundred and four seconds. The maximum height of the plume. What made this video, that you could see it, is frozen water vapor in the air. CO2 actually makes dry ice and that's what you see. And it looks like it dissipates, but it doesn't. CO2 is one and a half times the weight of air, so it stays in the ground. I'll finish reading. The maximum height of the plume was a hundred and ninety-seven feet tall. The maximum horizontal extension from this pipeline was one thousand three hundred and twelve feet, or eight feet short of a quarter mile wide. And this was an eight-inch pipeline, not a twenty-four-inch pipeline, which is proposed to come through Minnehaha County. Note that the gas itself is colorless, odorless, is not confined by the visual plume that you see. Consider this whether South Dakota wins. What happens if this thing breaks a mile from Wild Water West? You might just go pick up all the kids that are out there that day. These proposed pipelines will be the largest CO2 ever constructed in the United States. Neither company has previously built anything of magnitude of this kind or have pipelines themselves. They're hiring it done. CO2 pipelines can be very corrosive, according to Paul Blackburn, the attorney which you just heard. The pipeline issue expert said that even microscopic traces of amounts of water mixed with CO2 streams can rapidly corrode the pipes. Will these pipeline companies be able to maintain the pipe integrity? Keep water out, transporting supercritical CO2 under high pressure, which they have to maintain at least eight hundred pounds and they go up to twenty-one hundred pounds to keep it in liquid form and keep it moving. And to keep it in a liquid state is much different than transporting oil or natural gas. Because of its hybrid gas/liquid nature, supercritical CO2 behaves very differently during operations and ruptures. The high pressure, varying temperatures, and impurities make the behavior of liquid CO2 violent, difficult to predict. It can switch back and forth between gas and liquid in a supercritical state, which can be extremely dangerous. I don't know how much you know of the liquid, of the CO2. I've been dealing with this since October of twenty-one, when they first came through Iowa. I have a land in Iowa and I have land in South Dakota, both, that they are trying to pass this pipeline through and I am fighting them in both. And I am a shareholder in an ethanol plant and I am dead set against this. Questions for you to answer as a CEO, and if you get these answers, I would love to have them because I've asked five different times when I met with the Summit Carbon Credit people and nobody will give me an answer. How big will the ground cause? people and nobody will give me an answer. How big will the ground claw be? They won't tell you. How fast will it form? How long will it take to disperse? They can't or won't tell us. How would a dispersion be affected by the moisture, the temperature, the terrain, the wind, the barometric pressure that we have here in South Dakota? Will rain affect it differently? Will snow affect it differently? All these questions haven't ever been answered. How will the public be informed of such a dispersion in a timely manner to, so that they can leave an area? Would the EMTs even be equipped or be able to respond? I talked about four months ago to the Canton head of the fire department, asked him if they had the monitors for CO2 and he said, yes, they had two of them. But he said that the level is too high, we're not allowed to go in. So they wouldn't even be able to respond if they have a break. How's that going to work? How are we going to keep the people safe in this county? How far downwind would people have to be evacuated and how would you evacuate whole towns and that many people that fast? If you go on Google and, and bring up liquid CO2 asphyxiant, it'll tell you that over 10% in volume will kill you in less than four minutes. It is considered a deadly asphyxiant. It is what they use in the packing plants to euthanize the cattle, the hogs. It is what your turkeys and chickens people use when they get the bird flu and have to euthanize the whole coop and it's done in five minutes. What EMT can respond in five minutes? Even if there was one right here in this room, could they get here in five minutes? I doubt very much they could. Thank you.
Yeah, there's one question. In that demonstration there, how, how deep was the pipeline buried in that particular, do you know?
I do not know how deep that was. That was a simulated rupture of an eight-inch pipeline, liquid pipeline. Because I just got done listening this last Thursday for the Iowa and they, Summit don't want to let them even know how big this dispersion is going to be to the PUC. And if you don't do anything, Commissioner Nelson has said if they don't hear anything from you, they take it that you're in favor of it. So if nothing else, I would extremely consider, love it if you would at least come out and say, we are against this pipeline. Because in reality, Minnehaha County is the 800-pound gorilla in the room. If you don't do anything, it looks bad for the rest of the state that's trying to stop this. And this is a dangerous pipeline. Summit hasn't given you all the thing. Do you know that when it goes from a liquid to a gas form, it increases over 500 times itself in volume? 500 times itself. How much volume is in a 24-inch pipeline? I don't know that, but you're, I'm sure your county commissioner or your engineer for the county could tell you versus an eight-inch versus a 24-inch line, how much more you'd be looking at in volume. It's going to be astronomical and this ground claw will be miles, not feet, wide if it ever happens. Pray to God it doesn't. Summit said there's never been anybody killed from this and that's true in the United States. I can make the same statement. Nobody's ever been killed from a nuclear bomb in the United States. There's never been one here. We are the guinea pig of this whole thing coming through South Dakota. And there's lots of people and lots of them watching because there's, a fourth one was just put on the docket coming out of Indiana this past week. And there's more waiting in the wings. If you approve, if we let this be approved, we have lost our rights as landowners to say no. Thank you.
Well, we definitely need safety setbacks to protect us. I mean, we really do. This is such a hazardous pipeline and, you know, we're concerned for our, for our lives. So we would ask that you would seriously consider these ordinances and just wondering, does everybody have a copy of the ordinances? No?
So that, Joy, I think you can continue handing it. I was just going to finish up by saying, thank, thank our presenters and I think maybe the most prudent thing to do would be to allow you some time to think about this.
I have the same one, right?
If you as a commission would like to move forward or have some discussion about this, we can put it back on the agenda. But it's an option. There's several options that you have. You, so I'd be glad to, we can talk about this, I guess, at a next meetings or further meetings and decide what you'd like to do. So, thank you. That, this is the end of our business.
Could I make a short comment?
Scott?
I have a short comment. Could I make a comment? Short comment?
You can. You'll have to come to the podium and tell us who you are, your address.
My name is Al Slodog. I live in Brandon. I own land in Lincoln County. And just a point about these setbacks. Yeah, no one has been killed by a pipeline leak, a CO2 pipeline leak in the US. But there was in 1986, a fissure, like a volcanic break in a lake in Cameroon. And as a result, 1,746 people died and 3,500 had livestock. And there were people and animals suffocated within 16 miles of the break, of the leak. So, get to planning and zoning.
Okay. Can I make another comment?
I just want to hand these out.
Okay, okay. I guess we're at the end of the meeting. I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone.